Good evening and welcome, everyone. I'm calling the November 25th City Council meeting to order. This meeting is being held one week later than normal due to the impacts of the Veterans Day holiday earlier this month. As a reminder, we still continue to have a remote aspect to our meetings, and both staff members and members of the public may be participating in tonight's meeting remotely via WebEx. We are hopeful that Councilmember Joe may be attending, but he has let us know that he's not feeling well, so we'll update. And there is also technical problems related to likely the storm that happened last week, so we'll let you know if he joins our meeting. If not, he has an excused absence. Before we get started, I'd like to announce that we will be providing an update on the windstorm after the proclamation tonight, and we'll be doing that under Special Business. So the first item of the agenda this evening is the Pledge of Allegiance, and I welcome you all to join.
I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic, one nation, God, the visible, liberty and justice.
The first item under Special Business is ID 1715. This is Small Business Saturday Proclamation, and I'd like to invite Chris with the city's Economic Vitality Commission, and Monica with the Greater Issaquah Chamber, and Lindsay Pinkston from Highlands Council, and Jen Davis Hayes from our staff to come and join me up over here at the podium. Evening. Thank you for making it. Dan, you're going to join us, too?
I am.
Cozy, cozy. Whereas the Saturday after Thanksgiving every year is recognized as Small Business Saturday, and whereas the city of Issaquah celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas, according to the United States Small Business Administration, small businesses make up 99.7% of all businesses in the United States, and these small businesses are responsible for 64% of new net jobs created since 1995. And whereas most consumers understand the importance of supporting local small businesses, especially on Small Business Saturday, and report this day encourages them to shop small all year long, and whereas Issaquah Loyal encourages the Issaquah community to shop local and small, and community members can find local small businesses this year by using Visit Issaquah's Holiday Shopping Guide, and whereas our vision partners, the collaboration of economic development organizations, support the success of small businesses throughout the year. And now therefore I, Mary Lou Polly, the mayor of the city of Issaquah, do recognize November 30th, 2024, to be Small Business Saturday in the city of Issaquah, and I invite the community to join me in shopping Issaquah Loyal by supporting small businesses and merchants. And I would like to invite Monica and Chris to come to the microphone, introduce yourself. I know you both have a few words to share.
Hi, my name is Monica. I'm with the chamber, and I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening and for the proclamation honoring Small Business Week. It is truly an honor to accept this recognition on behalf of our small business community. In the wake of the recent windstorm, we need to support our local businesses. The need to support our local businesses has never been more crucial. Shopping locally not only strengthens our economy, but also helps sustain the heart and soul of our community during challenging times. Thank you once again for acknowledging the vital role that businesses play in the fabric of our city. This proclamation means a great deal to all of us.
Good evening, city council members, Madam Mayor, members of the public and staff. My name is Chris Richley. I am the Economic Vitality Commission Chair and local resident of Issaquah. When you think about small business, small business is the heart of a community. Any thriving community, small business is what drives it. It runs it. Small businesses turn into big businesses, right? But when you specifically think about Issaquah, you think about places like Gilman Village, the Highlands, the worklofts, just to name a few. They all need our support. Our heart needs support because of the last couple days, a few days with the windstorm, the power outage. I encourage our community to very much utilize the Small Business Saturday, not just Saturday, but beyond. I would encourage our community to also recommend visiting Issaquah to friends and families from outside of Issaquah to come and visit Issaquah, so they can too support the community that's such as small business. Our heart needs more support now than recent events. With our diversity of small businesses, I'm confident small business for everyone and some small business success creates and maintains a thriving community. Thank you for the proclamation.
Thank you, Monica and Chris. And, you know, in light of the storm, what they've said is just so important to our local business environment. So thank you all, and round of applause, and then let's do a picture. Okay, are we a big enough group? Should we move over? Ah, whatever. Just letting everyone know, Councilmember Joe was able to join us. The next item of Special Business is unexpected update on the windstorm that we have been living with for the last six days. On November 19th and 20th, we had extremely high winds come through Issaquah, creating damage to homes, businesses, and critical infrastructure throughout our community. In response, on November 20th, I issued an emergency proclamation. I'd like to invite our emergency manager, Jared Snyder, to provide an update on the city's response to the storm. Come on up, Jared. Glad you're still awake. Nice to see you.
Yes, a minor miracle. Not great. Just share my screen. Even my computer is tired. Can everyone see the slides online and hear me? Okay, great. Well, hello, everybody. Yes, my name is Jared Snyder. I'm the emergency manager for the city of Issaquah. The events over the last week have necessitated this visit, so I'm happy here to represent only a small fraction of the response of the city of Issaquah to this event, and I'm going to try to do my best to portray everything that has happened in the last few days and all the good work that has happened and will continue to work. So as the mayor said, November 19th was a historic event. Oh. Okay. Okay, all right, that's better. All right. Yes, okay, thank you, everybody. So, yes, as I mentioned, you know, it was a historic event and in some ways, you know, unprecedented event in our community. And I know Issaquah experienced winds upwards of 65 miles per hour from an unusual direction, the southeast, through what is known as the Cascade Gap, that created quite a lot of damage for not only Issaquah, but many of our neighbors on the plateau and south of us. And so Issaquah was particularly hit hard, much harder than some of our other cities, too, especially to the west of us, which was also a challenge, you know, to have isolated pockets of disaster, right, in a larger county. So almost all customers, including facilities, lost power as a result of this event, and some customers and some residents are still without power at the time of this presentation. So as, you know, we're going over the situation and what the responses look like so far, I just want to highlight that we're still in the middle of response, and, you know, only but hours ago, we are still working on things related to semi-emergent needs, you know, for the community. So I want to be sensitive particularly to those who may still be without power or connectivity. As a result of the windstorm, we had wide-scale road closures, dark signals, significant property damages to homes and businesses and other city infrastructure, and so this was a major event for our city. Now I want to go over and highlight some of the good work that we have done so far and that continues to happen in response to this event. So first, we're going to talk about public safety. So police and fire, they maintained heroic response during the storm, and that's not an understatement. While winds were still high and borderline unsafe, firefighters and police officers were still going out on calls for only most emergent ones, but still to serve our community. So I want to recognize that work that happened and just the bravery that those individuals displayed during this event. Our jail continued excellent service while on generator. Dispatch fielded a huge influx of calls, 617 calls from the 19th to the 20th, when in comparison, 237 calls were taken in comparison from the 12th and 13th. So for a group that's already, you know, short-staffed a lot of times, that is a tremendous effort and an impressive feat in and of itself. Eastside Fire and Rescue responded to many calls for trees on homes. Generator fires was a big part of this incident, especially in the days after the windstorm, and then again, increased calls for aid. Human Services provided wellness checks and resources to those who were most vulnerable during this windstorm, and they did an excellent job. Public Works had a very heavy lift during this incident. Many trees were creating road closures, but what also made it so challenging, too, is the intermixing of power lines. And so, you know, in that instance, PSC has the initial response and the responsibility to first move those power lines out of the way before Public Works crews can actually clear that road. So that was a limiting factor in this response, too, and especially why some of these road closures, you know, may have lasted longer than what we are used to in some instances, too. So great coordination by our Public Works crews to work with PSC, to open up roads following a closure, and then not only roads, right, but maintaining water, sewer, and stormwater service all through this incident, too. You know, critical infrastructure is, it takes maintenance and it takes works, and so what that included was running generators out to these locations, making sure they were operating correctly, and refilling them periodically, and to ensure that we didn't have any interruption of service to water or firefighting capability as a result. Public Works also helped in facilitating school reopenings, so close coordination with Issaquah School District to try to get as many students back in school on Monday as possible, and again, reestablishing traffic signal systems, you know, to get those dark signals back online and for safe transportation and movement across the city. One effort that I am particularly proud of as a city is resilience hubs. And, you know, council, I remember early on when I first started here, this was one of the ideas that we were hoping to implement within the city of Issaquah, and our planning truly paid off as a result of this incident. You know, I think some of our favorite moments were spent in these resilience hubs, just seeing the community together, getting the help that they needed, and really having, you know, this cross-pollination of community that doesn't always intermingle, too. So it was a small moment of beauty in a dark time. We opened up two resilience hubs. One was the Senior Center, and one was the Pickering Barn. At those locations, there was charging stations for small devices and medical equipment. There was free Wi-Fi, coffee, water, snacks, community resources. PSC was at the Senior Center to provide a face and someone to provide some insight into outages. We had a food truck support event at the Pickering Barn, and then really, you know, those sites served hundreds of community members, and that might be an underestimate, honestly. There was much, many, many people who took advantage of those services. Cougar Mountain Middle School, in partnership with the city, also opened up for a period of time between 12:00 and 4:00 to provide charging and warmth for particular Talos residents who, you know, are somewhat of a micro-island in some ways. So that was a huge lift. And then we also provided showers at the pool, which was something that the community was really asking for, especially as this event just dragged on to multiple days. I want to highlight some of the good coordination that happened between the city and partner agencies, and also highlight some of the good work. So Issaquah School District, as we talked about, and the opening of Cougar Mountain Middle School, and just the collaboration that happened there, the preparation for schools reopening by our Public Works and Park Ops team, clearing not only roads, but also walking paths, as many of our students, you know, use that as an option to get to school, and then also providing connectivity support to Issaquah School District. Issaquah School District had a service outage impact by the King County INET line being severed, and so our own IT department was able to help them out with some connectivity. And just hats off to our IT department and just the resilient communication lines that we have and how we were able to maintain internet access through this event. Eastside Fire and Rescue, they helped author and amplify safety messaging around safe and proper use for generators, as I mentioned, was an element of this response, and then provided situational awareness on community status by joining our EOC coordination calls, our Emergency Operations Center coordination calls as well, to make sure that we were appraised of each other's operations. Community outreach. Now, this event was a challenge for outreach and for information due to the nature of the incident. Large-scale power outages and disruption to things like cellphone service and communication provided unique challenges for this event. So with that, we tried to pass out the word on our many offerings through as many avenues as we could. So that meant website banner, email alerts, insider posts, social media, direct phone calls from residents, emails, and really a lot of media attention as well. All local TV stations made their way to Issaquah, the 425 Magazine, we engaged with them, and then even national media, CNN, Fortune, AP, and New York Times, all had interface with the city of Issaquah through this event. So quite a lot, quite a heavy lift there from our comms team. Speaking of the complex nature of this event and communication, one of the methods that we utilized to get information out was a very old-school method, which is flyers, but it was a very effective message and a very good way in getting information out to impacted communities. So we deployed word on the street signs in some of our high-traffic areas throughout the city, had CERT volunteers distribute flyers at grocery stores and gathering areas, had HOA connections and passed information out that way, and then had field staff being Public Works, police, and resilience hubs and CERT members, you know, in some cases being armed with this information, and, you know, police officers and CERT members actually going physically to neighborhoods with information to pass out these flyers to residents there. So huge, tremendous outreach on the flyers, and more to come as well. Just wanted to highlight some stats here on social engagement. Engagement was up 220% during this event, and we had a net gain of 609 new followers on our social media, a 340% increase in total messages received. Social posts averaged 73.1 engagements, while neighbors averaged 12.4. So, you know, we attribute that to sharing information, you know, that the community really, really needed, right? And then 1,200 views on the mayor's videos on YouTube alone. So those were very well-received. Thank you, Mayor. We received some great comments on social media, so we're just highlighting a few of them here on these slides. You know, these comments and these thank-yous really also mean a lot to, I know, our Public Works crews and others who are out in the field. We even taped them up onto the wall. So thank you, community, for sharing these thank-yous. They really do mean a lot to those out in the field. Want to highlight the business support that was happening during this event. We shared what was open and closed, and that included grocery stores and gas stations. There was frequent check-ins with businesses via phone and in person by the economic development team. There was assistance given to businesses where their primary business was displaced, and so we helped them out with new locations. Hosted virtual meetings with the mayor, the chief of police, chamber, and PSC, and there was 85 businesses attended in that outreach effort. And then we also helped a hotel who was storing, or who was housing, many PSC crews with parking, because there were so many crews that were in the area that they needed help finding locations to stay overnight. Let's talk about debris management. This is a tremendous lift and will continue to be a huge operation going on in the city, not only on city property, but also on private property. So first, let's talk about the city element of it. City crews worked around the clock to clear roads, sidewalks, parks, and trails. Public Works, as of Sunday, has filled 17 40-yard dumpsters, more than 1,200 cubic yards, and there's going to be much more where that came from. Parks staged debris collection sites for the city, and hauling out started today and will happen very regularly. Oops. There we go. These are some pictures from one of our debris collection, or from our debris collection event that was at Tibbetts Valley Park on Sunday. It was a November 24th event, like I mentioned, 249 vehicles dropped off debris. We filled 12 40-yard dumpsters and one truck with community debris there. A great volunteer effort. We had 10 CERT volunteers, five community volunteers, and two staff members from Public Works Operations, Public Works, or sorry, from Parks Operations and Public Works as well were supporting that event. We have two more events scheduled on December 1st and 8th, so we're anticipating high traffic for those events, too, especially as word has gotten out about these events, so we're happy to have those offerings. Recology is also offering additional curbside collection for the next two weeks, and that's through the 6th of November, and then transfer stations are taking debris for free, and there is more to come around this category, too. As I mentioned, you know, this is going to be an ongoing effort, and so expect more information about debris collection in the future. I want to highlight some work that happened today. A community rapid impact survey was conducted between Public Works engineering staff and building inspectors. They did a windshield assessment of the whole city to better understand private property damage. 29 properties were identified for inspectors to take a closer look at. That'll happen in the coming days, and then there were some 40 more private property with some form of damage that was albeit a little bit more minor. So we'll be engaging with those properties and making sure that they are safe, but also aware of the many resources that the city is going to make available. Let's talk about recovery. So as I mentioned, you know, this operation is still ongoing. We are transitioning away from operations and into recovery. So we have stood up Issaquah's Recovery Coordination Center. Here is just a brief overview of what the structure looks like. I want to point out that we have five kind of categories where we are tracking recovery, and that is in terms of operations, right, like actually supporting these groups, but also making sure that we're documenting any cost impacts, and that is within the debris management group, private property damage group, a business recovery group, infrastructure and facility recovery, so documenting city impacts, and then human services, so making sure our most vulnerable populations are also being supported through recovery. To highlight some of the few high-level items that we are interested in when it comes to recovery, this is really where, this is something that we're going to spend a lot of effort on, because it has a huge financial impact, right, to the city. So local declarations help with quick action, so thank you, Mayor, for the declaration of emergency. It's going to take coordination with other agencies on costs and damage assessment, right? So for federal funding and for state funding when it comes to damages, we're all in it together when it comes to county debris and county damages that we want to report. So coordination and working with our neighbors is essential. You may have noticed only a couple hours ago that King County sent out actually a call for damage to residents to make sure that they self-report if they had damage to their private property. The reason being is we're trying to tell the story, right, to the state and to the federal government about what's happened here, you know, in King County, and the best way to do that is through numbers, right? And so highly encourage any members of the community to please fill out that form. It really does help us in stating our case when we're taking this to the decision-makers. And really, if I haven't said it, the goal is federal and state funding support. That is what we are after. So we've stood up this group. We're going to work hard to try to get this for not only the city government, but also for residents alike. So much more to come on this in the near future. It's a pretty rapidly developing landscape, but I wanted to highlight some of the major areas that we're thinking about now. So with that, that is the end of the presentation, but I am also joined in person and online by many of our great department directors and others who have been involved in this response. So if there's any questions, we're happy to field them now.
I think that's great, Jared. Thank you. I am sure there's questions. Just before we open it up to council, I want to say that I am so grateful we have you in our organization, and I am so proud of the response. This citywide organization pivoted, just like they did in COVID, and people did jobs that they didn't know that they would be doing, and they did them well. And so very, very proud of the organization, grateful to getting help from the city of Kent, being able to have them give us some building, what's the word, Wally, building inspection and coordination, and they're sharing resources with us, and that's what we want to do in this region. And also that we were able to take advantage of being able to shop and purchase things in cities that still had that and bring those resources back to our community, to be able to feed emergency responders and have some things available at the residency hub. Many, many lessons to be learned. Would love to have a post-recovery visit from you as well. I'm sure there's a lot more data to share than what we've seen tonight. Council, I'll go for questions. I'll do comments as well. Questions, and then we'll do comments. Oh, Councilmember Hall.
Yeah, thanks. Just a quick one, and also just ditto. So impressed with our city staff stepping up to do what was needed, so just thank you to everyone who contributed. The King County call for private property that you were talking about, is that just for unincorporated King County residents, or should residents in Issaquah listen in, fill out that form or not?
All, yes, all residents, city or unincorporated. Yes.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
And is that the first time the county has sent out that kind of?
Correct.
That's great.
Yep.
Any more questions? And if there aren't any more questions, we'll go for some comments if councilmembers would like to. Councilmember Marts, followed by Council President.
So I'm just going to briefly put on my 15-year hat and say, I really appreciate the transparency with which the administration handled things this last week. You know, the city always rises to the occasion when emergencies happen, but this emergency, I think, both as a council member and as a homeowner, you know, I had a lot better visibility into what was going on in the city's response, and both the wonderful way to see how hard the staff worked and rose to the occasion, but just, you know, when you don't know when your power's going to be back on, when you don't know when your internet is going to be working again, you know, when the lights are out down in the valley and you're trying to figure out groceries and whatnot, just knowing what's going on with the city and getting that information helps so much. So thank you and the administration for that transparency that just ran all the way through this last week.
Thanks. The president.
Yeah, thank you, Jared. Just incredible Emergency Operations Center management, incredible on-the-ground staff work throughout the emergency. I sat in on most of those EOC calls and seeing the teamwork, the resiliency, the people being willing to do all of the things, yes, and help out. The troubleshooting and problem-solving was amazing. Public Works really gets a special thanks for not only the visible roadway and debris removal, but also the unseen portions. Your water kept flowing, your toilets kept flushing, and all of that was because they were able to put generators up and fuel those generators in those spots and keep that going. The resiliency hub at the Senior Center was inspiring. The quickness of getting that up, the community response, the staff response to that, seeing seniors and multiple languages and kids, and all of the needs come together was amazing. I was there for the first two days. That place was packed to the rim with people getting warm and charging devices, charging electric wheelchairs and hearing aids, all things that were just amazing to see. So there's so much more to convey about this, and we're still absolutely in recovery mode, but I really just want to start with a huge thank you to our incredibly tired staff and hope that you get a little bit of recovery as well.
Thank you, Council President. Any other comments? Well, thank you, Jared. Thanks for coming tonight on short notice and giving us a presentation with PowerPoint and all. Very much appreciated.
Thank you, Mayor. More to come.
Still feeling tired and a little bit emotionally overwhelmed, but so very, very proud. We're going to move into the audience comments portion of tonight's council meeting, and the members of the public may address their council at this time, either in person or... and the members of the public may address their counsel at this time, either in person or virtually. Those who signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you're joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand or send the host a chat message. That could be pressing the star three on your phone or looking for a hand icon if you're on a computer or smartphone. If you're in the room and did not sign up, I was still asked for other speakers before we close this portion of the meeting. City Clerk, has anyone signed up to speak for general audience comments or indicated desire to speak this evening?
No one has signed up in the room, and we do have a few members of the public with us virtually, but I'm not seeing any raised hands at this point.
And I'm looking in the room, and I see Chris, and he's shaking his head, no. So we do not have anyone in the room as well. So just a reminder, though, to folks, you can always get ahold of your counsel by submitting a written comment to them at any time. It is citycouncil@issaquawa.gov. The next item on our agenda this evening is the consent calendar. I don't have any comments on tonight's consent calendar, but are there committee chairs or chair designees who'd like to report on any of the consent calendar items? I'm not seeing an indication, looking at Councilmember Joe, no. The consent calendar was distributed to council in advance, and if authorized, the items on the consent calendar will be considered together and approved by one motion. Have the payables and payroll been reviewed?
They have.
Thank you very much. Does any council member desire to remove any item from the consent calendar and consider it under regular business? Not seeing anyone in the room or Councilmember Joe indicating that desire. Would someone like to make a motion? Council President?
I move to approve the consent calendar as distributed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All those in favor, can you signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Those opposed? That carries unanimously, 7-0. Next item of business is under regular business, AB 8886, the 2025 property tax levy. This item was last before the city council at the November 4th city council meeting where a public hearing was conducted, and I'd like to, and she's already up there, invite Budget Manager Susie Monsel to the podium for a presentation. Welcome, Susie.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. Starting with property tax. Thank you. So, thank you. This is the second time this item will be here tonight. So the purpose is we are hoping to adopt the 2025 property tax levy tonight. RCW requires jurisdictions to hold a public hearing, which was conducted on November 4th, and tonight we are proposing adoption. Since the November 4th public hearing, we've received a couple of updates from the assessor's office, and the changes have been on the margins. They've been very minimal. They will not impact the estimated average household impact from what we presented on November 4th. As a refresher, state law allows jurisdictions to increase the amount of property tax received annually by 1% plus the value of new construction that came in since the last year. So our 25 base levy is about $10.6 million with the 1% increase at about $106,000. The value of new construction from '24 was about $41,000, and the county makes some adjustments along the way, which accounted this time for about $27,000. So our total 25 levy is estimated at about $10.8 million. And in comparison to '24, that's about $175,000 more than the prior year. So as a reminder, the property values for 2025 are expected to increase by about 16% over this current year. The median residence value that we used for 2024 was about $1.125 million. We're now looking at about $1.3 million. So with that in mind, the estimated regular levy due to the city goes from about $712 last year, or this current year, excuse me, to $809 next year, or about a $97 difference. Looking at the median, the value of the median residence and how this math plays out, if we look at that middle row, the administration recommendation and proposal is to take that 1% increase over '24. If we do that, the median property value of $1.3 million would see $809 from the regular levy, $124 from the excess levy, for a total of $933. If the city did not take the 1% increase, that would be $920 or a difference of about $13. And this is also our opportunity to show, of the total property tax bill that the Issaquah resident receives, Issaquah accounts for about 9% of that, with the majority coming from the state and local school district funds. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you very much, Susie. Does council have any questions? I'm seeing none from Councilmember Joe either. Would someone care to make a motion? Council President?
I move to adopt ordinance number...
3077.
Leveing property taxes for the city of Issaquah for the fiscal year commencing January 1, 2025 on all property, both real and personal, in said city, which is subject to taxation for the purpose of paying sufficient revenue to carry on the services of said city for the ensuing year as required by law.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Not seeing any from the dais or from Councilmember Joe. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? That vote carries 7-0. We'll move on to the next item of business, which is also Susie Monsel. This is AB 8942, utility tax increase. The action before council this evening is to adopt the ordinance, and Susie never left the podium. So Susie, can do your presentation for us.
Thank you, Mayor Pauli. Shifting gears from property tax to utility tax. So tonight we are seeking council authorization to increase the utility tax rate for cable television, water, sewer, and stormwater utilities from 3% in 2024 to 4.5% in '25 and 6% in '26. This item was discussed as part of the '25-'26 budget development as well. So in overview, the administration proposal is to go from 3% in '24 to 4.5% in '25 and 6% in '26. Looking at the comparisons to other jurisdictions around us, we are at the low end at the moment at 3%. So going up to 4.5% or 6% puts us right around in the middle of our peer organizations. Looking at a, so we charge a lot of different rates depending on the size of the pipes, the consumption levels, but as an example, if we were to go from a 3% rate for using water as the example at about $21.35, that would go up to about $32 in '25 or about $42 in '26. But the total raised from this would be about $793,000 in 2025 and an additional $1.5 million in 2026. We did get a question on how this would impact rates versus tax and how this would play out. So these tables show the 24 average bimonthly bill for each of the three wet utilities, water, sewer, and stormwater, and then what the impact would be for rates versus revenue if we were to stay at 3% in 2025 or go to 4.5% in 2025. So that impact, if I go to the next slide, the total impact of the three wet utilities going from 3% to 4.5% would increase the average bimonthly bill by about $5 or about $28 for the year. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Council questions? Not seeing any from Councilmember Joe or on the dais. Is there a motion? Council President?
I move to adopt ordinance number...
3078.
Amending Chapter 5.32 of the Issaquah Municipal Code relating to the utility, business, and occupation tax for the cable television, water, sewer, and stormwater utilities, providing for referendum and establishing an effective date.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Not seeing any from Councilmember Joe or indication on the dais. All those in favor of the motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Thank you, Susie. We will move on to the next agenda bill, which is AB 8894, school zone speed cameras. The motion before council this evening is to authorize, and I'm inviting Assistant to the City Administrator Dale Markey-Crimp to the podium. Welcome, Dale.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council. Give me just a moment to pull up my slides. Excellent. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, Dale Markey-Crimp, Assistant to the City Administrator, and I am excited to be here with you again this week on our much-awaited topic of school zone speed cameras. The purpose of this evening's presentation is to share with the full council the findings of the vendor analysis and the potential new school zone speed camera locations, to present the administration's analysis, proposal, and rationale for a new location at Issaquah Valley Elementary School, and to obtain city council recommendation on the administration's proposal. A bit of background. I will say, actually, before I come to background, this information did go to the council committee earlier this fall. There have been a couple additions to the presentation made since then, specifically the addition of the equity impact assessment that's required by law. The delaying of this item provided time for city staff to complete that equity impact assessment, so you'll see that's also been included in the packet for today. So background. The school zone speed camera program here in the city of Issaquah was launched in 2008 with the installation of two cameras at Second Avenue Southeast near Issaquah Middle School and Issaquah High School. The administration has considered adding additional zones in the past, but has lacked the data and evidence specifically needed to corroborate safety concerns and to demonstrate financial viability of any expansion of the program. This past May, the administration, including our police chief, presented on the different types of automatic camera enforcement the city might consider in addressing the ongoing dangerous or reckless driving behavior, specifically red light cameras or new school zone safety cameras. At that council committee meeting, the council committee directed the administration to move forward with a vendor study of school zone locations, two school zone locations, one on Newport Way Northwest near Issaquah Valley Elementary School and a second on Northeast Park Drive near Grand Ridge Elementary School. The council committee also instructed the administration to move forward with a vendor analysis of six different potential red light camera enforcement locations. The red light study was conducted, was the first study conducted, it was conducted in June shortly after that council committee meeting. The study provided an estimate of violations at each intersection in every direction at program maturity, which is about 18 months after the installation of a new program. This data revealed that while intersections continue to have dangerous behavior, most of the dangerous behavior is not the running of red lights that would be captured by a red light photo enforcement camera. Chief gave a very, a very great and very photo-filled presentation about when exactly the red light camera would be triggered and when it would take the photo. Unfortunately, or fortunately, we're not seeing a lot of that, but we are seeing other turning behavior that a red light camera would not catch and not be able to enforce. The exception, of course, being on West Lake, Semamish, and 56th, but most other intersections studied would not have more than one violation per day. Given the relatively low incidence of violations anticipated and the projected revenues likely would not cover the high cost of installing those cameras and administering the system, the administration will explore other ways to intervene in these situations, especially as the police department continues to stand up their new traffic unit. The vendor conducted a second study on potential new school zones in the first week of September. We waited until later when school was in session and the lights were flashing to gather data. And data was collected for, as you can see in the attachments, data was collected for 24 hours, but then potential violations were calculated only during the current hours that the school zone flashes are active. So this is 8:30 to 4:00 p.m. on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, and Friday, and as was astutely pointed out by Council President, 8:30 to 2:10 on Wednesdays or early release days. As you can see, between 1,100 and nearly 1,600 violations were clocked during this four days for about an average of 1,400 per day at a given location or at a given direction, only during school hours. So this is about 2,800 per day when you think about a northbound and a southbound. This indicates that while flashers and, in one case, speed notifications, they've been installed, they are letting drivers know that they should be going slowly, we still have a lot of speeding and dangerous behavior happening in our school zones. Now, our analysis didn't stop there. It was important to establish the safety concern that we have heard from the community, concerns around speeding near schools. We also needed to make sure, similar with the red light cameras, that the city could be prepared to pay, to put up and then to administer this program. And so as part of the analysis done by the city to understand the financial viability, we made some assumptions about revenue and also around expenditures. In order to determine the financial feasibility, so specifically, can the city afford to operate and administer an expanded program, the following assumptions were made. One, given that the study was conducted during the first week of school, we assumed that drivers are probably re-acclimating to those lights being flashing, and so we reduced our baseline number, both of drivers and violators, by a slight percentage. This is spelled out in the memo as well or in the agenda bill. We also made the assumption that drivers will be responsive to noticing, to being noticed and to getting warning tickets. Part of the way that we've rolled out our previous program, that we would roll out any new program, would be to first provide warning tickets before you're cited for speeding behavior. And we think that folks will respond to those to some degree, and violations will stabilize in response to some of those first notices. We also believe the driver behavior will respond to a new camera on Newport Way Northwest less dramatically due to the high frequency of pass-through traffic. You're not necessarily always getting the same drivers, and so they are less likely to be as impacted by a camera because they may not expect it necessarily. We would expect routine drivers on that road to change their behavior. We also know that the high volume of that traffic is not necessarily always repeat drivers. We would expect drivers near Grand Ridge Elementary to be quicker to change. Northeast Park, although a main thoroughfare, is an internal street, and the majority of the traffic on that street is coming out of and going into the neighborhood there. Expect that folks in their neighborhood are more responsive to getting that ticket because they don't forget getting that ticket. The Equity Board, which considered the Equity Impact Assessment, they all had a personal story about the camera down here on Second Avenue Southeast. And we made the assumption that only about 50% of tickets are paid, and that is based off data on our current camera system and the frequency of payment. We also made some expenditure assumptions. Some of these aren't assumptions, they're just true facts. So based on the cost of cameras, the annual lease cost is $57,000 for a camera. That's under our current lease terms with our vendor, and the lease is a five-year lease. The monthly ticket overage fee is $5 per ticket over 800 per month per camera. Also, that the annual cost of police personnel to process violations would be $190,000 in salary and benefits per full-time or limited-term employee, and that a similar rate but at $145,000 in salary and benefits for the court personnel. So the personnel required to both review the violations, issue the citations, and then manage the flow as those citations come in to the court to be paid. I got ahead of my notes. One moment. An analysis of the net revenues indicates that both locations are financially viable in the same way that both locations have dangerous driving behavior. As a reminder, any revenues beyond the cost of leasing the cameras and administering the program are committed to capital projects for road and transportation improvements, especially the addition of sidewalks for safe walking and road redesign to slow traffic. This data seen another way... This data seen another way visually can be displayed here. So you see each of the different locations and their projected net revenues over the course of a five-year lease term. I also wanted to add, while the administration is recommending one additional location, I want to share a bit more about why. So, given the clear safety concerns at both locations and the financial feasibility, you may be wondering why the administration is hesitating on recommending both locations. In June of this year, a new law went into effect across the state of Washington. This new law, which came out of House Bill 2384, provides cities with expanded authority to use automated traffic cameras, but it also provides more restrictions on revenues collected. Specifically, in year four of a third, I should say first, Issaquah, given that we already have a school zone safety program with one camera location in it, we are able to add a second camera location at no change to how the revenues can be used. However, any location added after that would be subject to new revenue restrictions. Specifically, the Cooper Jones Active Transportation Safety Act and account, following, I believe, starting in the fourth year, is what the notes say, 25% of revenues after operational costs would be automatically first and foremost diverted into that state account, which goes towards state projects, not towards our local projects. Also, an equity assessment was noted as required. That was part of the new law as well. That equity assessment, as in your packet, has already been conducted on these two potential locations. So with this new, with the understanding that a third location would lead to a reduction in city revenues in the fourth and fifth year of a five-year lease term on the cameras, here you can see the adjustment that would make to the net revenues. Or seen similarly, if we were to focus in on what we'd expect from the Grand Ridge Elementary location, in the first condition, you see a flattening out, but in that second condition, you see a real drop in 2028 when that Cooper Jones safety account would come into effect. The new information, so, Council Committee, thanks for bearing with a little bit of additional information on this go-around. A new element was completed in the past month and is legally required as an Equity Impact Assessment. The analysis revealed that of the 22 equity targets, the city meets or met 15, including having lower-than-average fines for our cameras. Many of the jurisdictions around us charge up to $290. Our current fines are 124. And a legally sound plan for revenue distribution, so a reinvestment in the neighborhoods in which these cameras are placed. There were three opportunities for equity considerations during implementation, including increased restorative opportunities for violators. In conversation with Chief Schwan, one of the things that our traffic unit is thinking about is how to offer specifically youth who might be driving through these locations the opportunity to engage in some traffic school rather than just paying a fine. And so we've been in conversation about some more opportunities, that's one example. And then there were four potential concerns, specifically around the demographics of both of the neighborhoods that we are considering placing cameras in. In both neighborhoods, there are residents that have higher-than-city-average representation of a historically marginalized group. Along the area near Issaquah Valley Elementary, we have an older, on-average population, that mostly have an average lower median income than the remainder of the city, so seniors who are living on fixed incomes. And then around the neighborhood by Grand Ridge Elementary, we have more people of color that live in that community in particular and commute in and out of that community. As is spelled out in the Equity Impact Assessment, there are sort of two sides to this coin. One is that when you place a camera in a community, the residents in that community are more likely to interact with that camera, and so potentially more likely to get a ticket. However, the residents in that community are also more likely to benefit from that camera as people's behavior changes and it makes it safer for folks who are moving around that community. So you'll see it's been marked as a concern simply because the inclusion of a camera in that location might oversample that population, but you can also see, right next to that concern, there's a green check because we think that the benefit will also be felt by that community. There's one additional note. The commuter behavior and what we can understand through some data analysis to be the origins of those commuters through those different stretches of road. The commuters along Newport Way Northwest are likely more representative of the city of Issaquah as a whole, whereas the more racially representative and socio-economically representative, whereas the commuters coming in and out along Northeast Park, given that they are mostly residents of that community, are more likely representative of the residents of that community. So kind of convoluted way of saying that because we're concerned about the impact of the residents in that community to the additional camera, if we're also saying those residents are likely the commuters going in and out of that community, we would be concerned in the same way, that they could sort of have the double interaction with that camera. I will add that this equity assessment was shared at the November meeting of the Issaquah Equity Board. They approved the findings of the assessment and recommended it for council's consideration with no concerns. So we come to options. There are four options that we're presenting this evening. There were three options presented to the council committee when they met in September. The council committee voted two to one in favor of option four over option two. In preparation for this meeting, the administration considered a new third option, which is sort of another take on option two, a staggering of the two locations. We think this would alleviate some of the significant concern that we have and that the Equity Impact Assessment also had on staff capacity to administer the launch of two new locations simultaneously. The administration, however, is still recommending option four due to concerns about staffing to administer two new locations, the new revenue restrictions placed on a third location, and the interest in seeing if behavior on this interior street can be changed through different methods, specifically the staffing up of our traffic unit. One additional visual I wanted to share, similar to the visual I shared before, is just around the traffic behavior in general. So this slide and the next slide show the flow of traffic through these two areas during the whole of the day. I think it's quite noticeable that traffic on Newport Way, it remains high, especially throughout the day, pretty consistent traffic. And actually, northbound decreases pretty significantly, like the highest rates of traffic are actually happening during school hours along this stretch of land. Northeast Park Drive, we see actually kind of a little bit of a different pattern. So we actually see higher volume of traffic outside of times when the school zone camera would be on. This is another consideration that we're making as we think about whether or not we're ready to launch two new locations at two different places.
I guess I maybe see that for the second, but the first one looks like the peak, no, sorry, go to the second slide. Yeah, so the top one, which is the, which direction?
Well, westbound, it says right there.
That seems like the peak traffic is exactly when the cameras would be on.
The peak traffic is right before, you're true, right around 8:30 is still pretty high, but the peak traffic is right about 8 o'clock and then 6 o'clock. And then with eastbound, it peaks in the evening hours, so we see a dip during school hours.
Thank you.
So our proposal. The administration is proposing adding a second school zone safety location at Issaquah Valley Elementary, both a northbound and a southbound camera. This would keep us within the terms of the current city code so that we'd have no new revenue restrictions. It would also address the high incidence of ongoing speeding, even when lights and a sign telling people the speed that they are going are flashing. And with the high frequency of pass-through traffic, while this is a minor detail, the high incidence of pass-through traffic provides more favorable financial viability for the full five-year lease term. The administration is recommending that the city council recommend the addition of one school zone safety location and that the mayor sign an amendment to the agreement with Vera Mobility to add two cameras at this location along Newport Way Northwest. Timing and next steps, the Equity Impact Assessment has already been completed. We are hoping in this month to move forward with communication to the community. I've never worn out a microphone. And also to sign the contract amendment, but also to allow us to, some time to collaborate with the school district on how we would communicate out. And then January and February, we would hope to install new cameras to be able to go live before the end of Q1 so we can start getting warning tickets out there, but also provide our court staff some time to staff up and our IPD team, which has a tentative plan, some time to staff their plan as well. So again, this is the recommendation, and I will take any questions.
And before we go to questions, I would like to see if Councilmember Martz, who is Chair of Services Safety and Parks Committee, is there anything you want to summarize on the committee's recommendations? And then I already saw Councilmember Ray will have a question.
I would. Thank you, Meta-Major for the opportunity. Regarding this bill, at the September 30th, 2024 Services Safety and Parks Committee meeting, the administration presented the reports from Vera Mobility as well as analysis on the financial viability of each potential camera location to the council members in the committee. The committee voted two to one in a split decision between adding one additional school zone location at Newport Way Northwest and adding a new school zone location at both Newport Way Northwest and Northeast Park Drive. All committee members were supportive of a new location at Issaquah Valley Elementary. However, a minority of the committee was also in support of adding a third school zone location at Grand Ridge Elementary at Northeast Park Drive. The administration has added additional information on the feasibility of the third, tonight's meeting, obviously. So this concludes my report.
Thank you, Councilmember. And Councilmember Ray, before I go to you, I remember when we had committees, you always wanted that majority-minority report, so you must have liked the way Councilmember Martz presented that. Councilmember Ray.
Thanks. I'm confused by the analysis dash a third location slide, and particularly as it relates to diverted to the Cooper Jones Active Transportation Safety Account. And I'm reading this, is 25% of revenue after operational costs get diverted, but when I look at the graph, it looks like a 75% reduction in our revenue, so it feels to me like that's backwards. Like 75% is getting diverted.
I'll have to, let me check the numbers, but it shouldn't be 75%. It should be 25 of what's remaining after. So it's a pretty small amount that's remaining, and we've also got staffing costs going up. I can do a quick check on the math, though, for you.
Yeah, because what I'm seeing is really is a 75% reduction between 2027 and 2028. If you look at going from nearly $400,000 to just slightly over $100,000. So it just, if it is, it's a 75% diversion, those numbers work. If it's a 25% diversion, those numbers look funky to me.
Okay. I trust that you ran them again, I will check my spreadsheet as well.
All right.
Council President?
Thank you. Let me get back to my questions. Okay. Dale, you provided us all kinds of additional information since the last Services and Safety and Parks. Can you talk about the difference between potential infractions, which seems to be what Vera Mobility is measuring here, and citations, which was one of the numbers that you had given us for the current cameras, Second Avenue Southeast? I'll start with that.
Yes, and I can tell you, there are a couple of different layers of that. So they provided potential violations based purely off of that capturing who is speeding through the area. That number, we still think is a little high, and so we estimate it down for our own calculations. The difference between violations and citations, there are a few things that could be happening. One is that, in some cases, as mentioned, for some violators, it'll be their first time violating the speed, and so they will get a warning on their first go-around, regardless if it's during our implementation period or if it's their first time. I know I have sped and gotten a warning through a school zone myself. I know, how dare I say it on the record. Citations also might not be issued to certain, in certain cases. So the camera is an imperfect tool. It requires taking a photo, and that photo being clear enough that you can read the license plate. In some cases, the license plate itself might be occluded, and thus that person can't necessarily be cited. So an unclear photo can lead to someone violating but not being cited. A somehow masked license plate might also lead to that. A mismatch in photos between the front of the car and the back of the car might also lead to something not being cited. And then there are exempt vehicles, so emergency vehicles, they might violate the speed but also not be cited. We did discuss, there's a, at our current camera during a recent speed study, there was a notable discrepancy between, in one direction. We're exploring that right now, and we've got a question out to our, specifically out both to our, to our police team to take a look and see if that discrepancy continued in subsequent periods, and then also out to our vendor to see if we need to take a look at the camera and make sure that it's capturing. But that could lead to a discrepancy between someone violating and the citation actually being issued.
Okay, so looking back at those Second Avenue Southeast, ignoring the northbound, where you said there's this potential issue where it suggested only 30% were being issued citations, the southbound is suggesting that 70% of potential violators were issued citations. So have we calculated that into our estimates here for the projected cameras?
We have not.
Okay.
We have not because it shouldn't be quite, there shouldn't be quite that discrepancy. And that was a very small sample. It was a sample of four days, and so we think that that is not necessarily representative of what we're seeing over time. So we haven't calculated that into our overarching numbers for the news.
But as a policymaker, I have a little bit of questionable data for making that decision analysis on. Okay. And then the last part of that question following up on that. So the violation rates for Second Avenue Southeast are just 5%, it looks like, and with looking at the citation rates, potentially as low as 2%. That's a lot lower than the projected violation rates for these proposed camera locations. Do we have a plan for if citation rates are really that low and revenue is that low for how we would either budget off of this or pay for this program if the revenue is that much lower than anticipated?
That location has been active for 16 years, and we've seen a pretty steady decline over time. We've kind of leveled out now in the last few years at this like 5%-ish. We don't anticipate in the first five years of this program that we would end up anywhere close to that 5%, especially given where the current, just given the current behavior of driving. I do think it is important to mention, and has been added in here, this program should be evaluated every year, and it should absolutely be considered for, it is a short, it should be a short-term intervention. And so at the end of the lease term, the city should consider whether or not it still needs to have those locations active, especially as we consider road redesign along different stretches of road. We know there are certain road redesigns that hopefully we're able to pay for that would change driver behavior. And so it would be recommended, this isn't a program that should live in perpetuity, it's a program that should live for the lease term and be reevaluated throughout.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you. I have two questions for you and one for the city administrator, and that leads perfectly into one of my questions that I had was, seems like we have pretty good startup criteria in terms of need and then financial viability, but like especially with the program that started by Issaquah High School. And by the way, I grew up driving Issaquah High School, driving by that camera, doing my best to go to school before or after it was on, which is why I joined the jazz band, so that's one trick to get around it, zero period. So that's one trick to get around it, zero period. Was, do we have like success criteria or shutdown criteria? Like if we meet this definition of success for this timeline, we consider shutting down the program? Is that something we've ever thought about, or is that something that we'll need to kind of get into in the future?
You know, it's not something that we've defined yet. One of the considerations in the equity impact assessment is program evaluation. We are required by law to assess annually on rates of speeding, rates of violation, rates of citation. I know our court keeps great records on both gross and net revenue, but I think one thing that we will want to keep track of, and one thing as I look at the new law in particular, is a much closer attention to what's changing in driver behavior. We have baseline data now, and so we can use that to see year over year if we're seeing the change we want to see. Certainly, if we're not seeing a change, we should be reconsidering a program. The challenging part with this is the lease term locks us in for five years, so we know that it's not something that we can say no to next year, that we would be committed for a short period of time. However, it's important to note, and I didn't note in this presentation, but noted with the council committee, a question came up about, you know, we're anticipating changes to Newport Way. I confirmed with our engineering team that those changes aren't, ground is not going to be broken until far after the five-year lease term. But to answer your success measures question, I think we need to gather some data to see behavior change. All indications of studies that have been done show that behavior does change, and we'll want to see how significantly we impact behavior through any intervention.
Spoken like a true performance management specialist. Okay, great. The next one is just to clarify, the north and southbound cameras don't count as two separate cameras. Is that right with that?
They are, they are two separate cameras.
Under state law.
Yeah, under state law, does that trigger the?
Oh, no. One location. So it's done by locations.
Oh, it's done by school zone?
By school zone location. Yeah, because, you know, it is, it is a single place. So even though it's a camera shooting this way and a camera shooting this way, like it's, the dangerous behavior is happening in the location, not just necessarily along one side of the street.
Okay. Thank you very much. So my next question's for you, city administrator. So earlier today, I'd given you a call because I was still kind of in the same place I was during the retreat, not really understanding what the safety concern was here, especially with the huge right-of-way ditches on each side. So I wasn't entirely bought in on the kind of pedestrian need there. But I talked with the city administrator, who helped me think about it in this other way that I hadn't even thought about, and I just wanted to make sure the rest of the council heard it too. So would you, would you be willing to share that with, what we talked about?
I will try to recreate.
It was good.
My thoughts. The term "school zone speed cameras" or "school safety zone," we kind of say is like one word. And I think we sometimes forget what this is. And this is a pre-designated area that we have concern about, because it is a thoroughfare next to a school. So why do we have concern about it? Well, in the case of Issaquah Valley Elementary, there's a playground right there. We have kids playing on that playground. Perhaps a ball gets loose. A ball gets loose on a roadway, child runs after it, there's a safety issue. People walk to school, there's just a lot of activity. And so prior to any discussion regarding a camera enforcement, there already is a school zone, and so we've already recognized that there is some danger involved here. And so what pursuing a school zone safety camera allows is allows us additional enforcement in an area we've already recognized as potentially being dangerous. And so making that area less dangerous by changing the behavior of the drivers. So this has been discussed at the council now, you know, nine, 10 months now. It starts as a safety issue. It starts as already an area that has been designated as one of concern, and we believe that by putting the camera in, that enhances safety in the school zone. So that, you know, when you, when you look at why we're doing this, we're doing this for safety, and we're doing it because we've already recognized that the area has the potential to be dangerous, given the roadway is located next to the school. So that was hopefully helpful to you, Councilmember Hall, as we talked this afternoon. I don't know if it helps anyone else, the council, but I, you know, first and foremost, the administration looks at this as a safety concern in an area that's already been designated as an area of concern.
Councilmember Hall, did you have additional questions?
No.
I do have, if the council agrees, I have a comment and a question for council. Is that okay? So the question is first for Councilmember Ray. Would you like us to take a five-minute break so we can get some verification on the drop?
That would be really awesome, because it puts me in an odd spot not knowing.
Yep. And Dale, would you need five minutes, 10 minutes?
Five minutes.
Five minutes, okay. And the comment is that, kind of picking up on Councilmember Hall's, that's, you know, a performance manager, data performance managers, that's what you expect from her. I just wanted to add in that one of the culture changes we are trying to make in the administration is that we are data-informed but value-driven. And so I appreciate that the administration added the third example. It doesn't have to pencil out. You can actually decide that the community value is that when you are talking to parents of kids who attend these schools, these students, the parents are like, you know, yeah, we want you to be doing the things that you think bring the highest level of safety in these areas, if they pencil out or not. And so let's look at the numbers that Dale works at after the break and think about the values that our community have and the data that Dale has brought to inform you on what kind of decision you would be most comfortable making. So with that, it is, let's see, it is eight, let's come back at 8:25. That gives you some restroom breaks as well, so. Okay, thanks.
I have wondered. (laughter)
Pulling us back in from our short recess, I'm going to hand it back over to Dale and let's see if we have some updated information.
We do. So the beauty and the curse of the flexible spreadsheet is that it is very easy to update your numbers. So Councilmember Ray, thank you for pointing out what was a data issue, a data error in the calculations around revenues. What you originally saw in understanding the impacts of the restriction of HB 2384 was this pretty significant drop in '28 and '29 for a third location represented in the chart and then, or the table and then the chart. A quick look at the spreadsheet indicated that salary had been not included as an administrative cost in that calculation. So it was, it was actually 25% of the gross revenues minus the lease costs of the camera, but not the lease costs plus the salary costs of the program to be administered. And so that counts as an administrative cost of the program. So once you factor in the administrate, the cost of the police officers and the court staff to administer the program as part of the expenditure assumed, you see a different drop in the, in the net revenues that the city would have. So you see this drop is much less significant. This does not include the, we do pay a fee on top of any ticket over 800. That's not included. That's not covered. So if you're still thinking like, oh, that's not quite the correct percentage, that amount is not covered as part of our assumed expenditure because it's on top of our agreement with our vendor. But still a significantly increased net revenue prediction there.
Questions? Councilmember Ray.
Super helpful. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Dale, appreciate it.
And people are still looking at it, so I'll hold for a second to see if there's additional questions. Councilmember Hunt.
Thank you. I was quickly skimming. It seems to me that the earlier numbers that we saw are, are used in the administration's analysis and the, and the different options. On one of the first pages, it talks about the $3 million net revenue difference, for example, between the options, which is not, which is not that. So I'm wondering if in light of this difference, first of all, if we need to make sure that the information that the public gets about the analysis can be updated throughout, but then also if we can, if you could walk through if that changes the administration's thinking on it, a recommendation on it, because it was, it does seem that the analysis was done with those other numbers.
Mm-hmm. I think we have some of the same, we have some of the same concerns. I think the staffing element is still a concern. The, the, over the course of five years, do we see the traffic change faster than we might have predicted? We, we might on an internal street. I think it alleviates the financial component, which was one small part of our concern. Again, which is why we provided four options today, this idea of staggering might be a, an in-between to be considered.
So Councilmember Hunt, are you wondering if there is like, instead of pick one, pick from these two recommendations? Is that what you're asking, if they've shifted their recommendation that way?
I would certainly want to know if, if it does shift the recommendation and also if it, if it in some other way changes the recommendation of the staff, because it does seem that the numbers throughout were using those earlier calculations.
City Administrator?
Again, back to my earlier comments about safety. And so if we, if the council believes that the second location at Grand Ridge Elementary will enhance safety, you know, I think we've always wanted to focus on that. There are operational concerns which are real, and I think if the council wishes to move forward with both of these, we would ask that there be some, a phase time that we would just start with Newport Way location and then give us a few months to get settled, make sure we have the staffing in place, and then move forward with the Grand Ridge Elementary. So perhaps we do one now, stage it for second quarter, and then perhaps stage the, the second one for the beginning of the school year in the fall.
Thank you. Additional questions on the revised information? Councilmember Hall?
Oh, just general questions. Okay. What was the other location concern you'd expressed earlier about Grand Ridge? You said something about like Newport, you have commuters and residents, but the one up in the Highlands would really mainly be residents. Can you expand on that?
Or that the commuters are the residents. And so just when you notice in the equity impact assessment, the population directly surrounding the school and thus most impacted by the camera location is, has a higher percentage of people of color in our community, and so they would be likely sort of additionally impacted. I don't think it's a, the Equity Board did not find it to be a significant concern that would outweigh moving forward with camera installation, especially given some of the other mitigating factors that the board discussed and that are recommended in the impact assessment.
And I think it was sort, if I can just rephrase it a bit, Dale, is that the, the people that would be receiving citations come from a population that we are concerned about when we do an equity analysis. People who would benefit most from this are the same people because it's their neighborhood. Their kids go to those schools, they commute. So the Equity Board kind of went, hmm.
Yeah, definitely is a hmm, yeah. I guess this brings up another question, too. Do we have a sense of when, so you said we're required by state law, I assume, to evaluate a speed zone safety camera program. You know, when that happens and if council chooses to do two locations, could we not wait to do a second camera until after the evaluation of the first and would that, or would that be helpful at all?
We're required to evaluate them annually. You would not need to wait. You couldn't, you could implement a location without waiting for an evaluation on another location. That wouldn't necessarily be an issue.
So there wouldn't necessarily be any benefit to waiting for the, whatever the data that comes out of an evaluation, we could move forward with. Two locations, there wouldn't necessarily be anything that would come out of the evaluation of Newport that might benefit how we implement Grand Ridge that we can think of off the top of our head, I suppose.
Likely no, because the, the implementation of the program is, is pretty standardized. I think we would likely do the same behavior in terms of partnership with the schools, getting information out there, and we wouldn't necessarily change the installation of those cameras. Also, we're going to learn really different things about the traffic on Newport Way Northwest than we are on Northeast Park Drive, just given that the traffic itself is different. You can even see in those graphs of when traffic peaks and when it valleys is really different. So I can't imagine that we would learn a lot about what would occur on, on Northeast Park from Newport Way and vice versa. So that order wouldn't necessarily matter. I think the big focus is staff capacity to stand up and to process citations. You know, it was, it was mentioned by staff that, or there's also, there's a legal requirement for the video to, the photos to be processed in a certain amount of time in order to issue the citations. So you can't have this big, big backlog that goes on for months and months, and we would need to make sure that we have the staff to do that. So standing up to simultaneously wouldn't necessarily allow us to be in compliance.
Thank you. Appreciate that.
Additional questions? Dale, thank you for doing that quick recalculation and bringing the information back. Uh, Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you. It's, it's mentioned in our materials that it would be expected because the population that's going by the Grand Ridge Elementary School is in that neighborhood, lives in that neighborhood, that they would likely be faster to respond to the camera and have less violations, which from a safety perspective is absolutely what we want. So if we, as a council, went with a different option, what would be the approach to make sure that we still have that safety improvement, those traffic reductions? What could we do differently that we are not doing now to see that behavior change if we didn't put the camera there?
Yeah, one consideration, and we talked about this at council committee as well, is with the staffing up of our traffic unit is a more active IPD traffic presence in that particular area. We would expect to see pretty quick behavior change with that as well. That's not something that we can scale, you know, as we know. One of the reasons we pursue cameras as an intervention for more consistent violations is that we need to have our police in other parts of the city responding to other emergencies. But we know we are staffing up this traffic unit, so they potentially have some capacity for that. That's one other option. We also, Council President Walsh pointed out to me, and I did not know this, that we recently installed new speed, along with the flashing beacons, indicators of speed on Northeast Park Drive. That's new, and so we actually don't yet know the impact of that. We could evaluate to see if that changes behavior in any sort of way. Maybe yes, maybe no. I think given that that exists already on Newport Way Northwest and we haven't seen the change, again, the, the types of traffic are different on those two stretches. These are all sort of questions. So there's some more information we could gather, but I would say probably the most likely would be a sort of focused traffic unit intervention.
Counsel, Deputy Counsel President DeMichele.
Following up on City Administrator Bob Quitt's comments about it, it's already identified as a high traffic, somewhat dangerous area to begin with. Do we have any flexibility about the time span? I mean, I know if we have a set number of hours, but can we move those hours and possibly take some of those hours into that where we do see a high level of traffic violations? Just a thought that, that perhaps as a public facility, and we all know that schools are used for public meetings and all kinds of school, after-school events all the time. So even with the fact that they are quote-unquote "after school," we know that there are activities occurring during those periods, even though it's not school hours.
Yep. Yeah. I have to say, I don't know the answer to that currently off the top of my head. I know that in other jurisdictions where they, so Lake Forest Park, for example, they had a school zone. They chose to change the designation of that stretch of road from a school zone to a speed zone. That's allowed under the new law that, as I mentioned, there's a, this new law allows for an expanded use of cameras. There's some additional demonstration of need that needs to be made, including more citations, more collisions. You saw in the data in the equity impact assessment and also the data that was shared as part of the question and answer. We do have a good amount of speeding. We haven't had a significant number of collisions, and actually collisions are a big data factor into re, like not renaming, but taking something out of being a school zone into being a speed zone. And so I'm not sure that we currently have the data to reassign an area. I'm not, I think we have some good, I believe, leeway over our school zone hours. I'd have to look into exactly what we would be able to constitute as a school zone hour. That could be changed at a later date. That's not something that we would need to change right now. Yep.
Additional questions? Okay, I'm looking at Councilmember Joe, not seeing a question. Is there someone prepared to make a motion?
Yes, Madam Mayor. I move to authorize the addition of one school zone safety camera location by Issaquah Valley Elementary School at Newport Way Northwest and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute an amendment to the agreement with Vera Mobility to add two cameras at this location.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Is there council discussion and council remarks?
I would like to speak to it. So I wanted to move the motion as it came out of committee because it was, that is what the majority of the committee supported, but I would like to move at this point an amendment. I would like to, and I have given Tisha the language for that, although I do wonder if my language was slightly off at the end, but, Tisha, I don't know if you can put it up, but I'd like to authorize the addition of two school zone safety cameras located by A, Issaquah Valley Elementary School at Newport Way Northwest, and B, Grand Ridge Elementary at Northeast Park Drive, phase the implementation per the administration's suggestion and authorize the mayor into, to enter into and execute an amendment to the agreement with Vera Mobility to add, and here's where I put two cameras, but I should have said four cameras, at this location, at these locations.
Is there a second? Second? It's been moved and seconded. Just checking in with the city clerk, but at this point in time, those speaking to this would be speaking to what is up on our screen up here.
Yeah, the amendment. I'd like to speak to why I want to amend the original.
Can we also see the original motion up there as well?
Yeah, I was going to ask Councilmember Martz, would we treat this as a substitute motion, so this would replace?
Sure. It's however makes sense. I just, I wanted to see if I got a second for making a change to what came out of committee, not just immediately try to substitute what came out of committee with my own preferred.
So let's get the original motion back up there as well. And while that is happening, if the substitute motion mover would like to comment on it in a second, let's go ahead and start talking about it.
I sure would. So first off and foremost, and I think everyone understands this, it's not about the revenue, it's about the safety of our kids. And the question here is, is it better to have a given set of cameras or not to have a given set of cameras? We have shown that, and I love Chris's eagle eye on the money, and I'm so glad he found that. I'm pretty sure that even before he found that change, the net summary over five years for all of these cameras is a positive cash flow to the city. But as long as we can afford it, I don't care how much revenue it brings in. I care about if it increases safety for our kids. A couple of the things that were discussed, whether over time it would, compliance would go up. I consider Second Avenue sort of an internal street in the sense that most of the people who go up it, I go to St. Michael's Episcopal Church. Everybody who goes past St. Michael's is going to this, going to this high school. They're not, they're not headed south. Secondly, the Cooper Jones Active Transportation Safety Account, well, if 25% of the excess revenue goes to state funding, that seems like a nice equity feature, not a bug. In terms of a traffic unit, if I can, if I can go to the public and they say, hey, we're going to have two traffic officers and you're going to put them sometimes at a place where you could have a camera to solve the same problem, but you're going to make them go up there and, and, and sit up there when, when you could solve it with a camera, that doesn't seem to make a lot of sense. And then finally, on speed reporting, lowering of speeds, oh, that it were so, because if it were so, we wouldn't have our brand-new speed bump on Mount Olympus Parkway, because we have informed drivers of their speed going up that hill for an eternity, and it didn't do any good. So I believe, and finally, one last thing. The hardest part about my 15 years on this council has been when folks who lived on Northwest Oak Crest Drive told us that we could have had the opportunity to lower speeds on Newport Way and that they believe that that would have saved the life of a child. Now, you can argue whether that was the case or not, but lower speeds save lives and lower speeds around schools make sense. And so this is why I was proud to make this amendment and hope my fellow council members will support the amended language. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll go to the second. Would you like to speak, and then we'll open it up to all council members?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I agree with Councilmember Martz. I had similar reasons for supporting this second motion. I think also the administration in bringing forward this phased option, which addresses some of the concern around the staffing, hopefully, hopefully alleviates some of that concern as well, and so I appreciate the administration bringing that forward. And the bottom line is safety. I think that, that it's a feature, not a bug, to use Councilmember Martz's language about that it's going to reduce the speeds faster on Grand Ridge Elementary because it is a neighborhood that, that a lot of the folks are going to be repeated users of that stretch of road. So, you know, if we, if we're looking to improve safety and we think that is going to be achieved maybe even faster at the second location, we're seeing the same unsafe behaviors at both locations. I agree with Councilmember Martz and am supportive of doing both, both zones and doing them in a phased manner to address the staffing constraints.
Other council members? Councilmember Ray?
Thank you. I just want to say something, I think you said, Mayor Pauli, which was we are data-driven and values-based.
Data-informed and value-driven.
I was close.
I'm going to get us all cards, because Dale and I have been testing each other on remembering it that way.
It's really good, because the data is, became clearer, clearer as the discussion evolved, but the values were always there, and this was never a revenue thing and never should have been a revenue thing. This was always a safety thing. And so I think I came into tonight kind of on the fence of where I was coming down, and as the numbers broke the way the numbers broke, it became really clear to me that, you know, we, we can, we can address our traffic issues and we can do it in a cost, cost-effective manner. So I think, I think the analysis was great, and I think this is the way to go, and I think that there's, there's an opportunity with Grand Ridge, and there's an opportunity, clearly an opportunity down in Newport.
Additional, Councilmember Hall?
Clarifying question, as a matter of fact. So my only concern with this, and by the way, the substitute, the vote we're about to do would be to make this something that we vote on. Is that right? Okay. My only concern is staff capacity, which is something that was brought up. So just a clarifying question on the option slide that was presented. It says, option three, add two, but stagger implementation, which seems very reminiscent to this. Then it says adding second location in fall 2026 to address staff capacity issues. So I wanted to make sure we're all in the same boat, that the second phased-in one would be fall 2026. And then to ask the follow-up, we feel like that amount of time would, would allow us to address staff capacity concerns. Is that right?
Yes, so that is slightly different than what City Administrator Bob Quitt said about fall 2025. The recommendation from court staff in particular was 18, 12 to 18 months after the launch of one camera would give, get us through what is considered to be, in very official terms, the bump that we would expect to see in technically second-time offenders, second-time violators. So you get that first warning and then you get your first real ticket. Normally that, like getting to maturity, takes about 12 to 18 months, and so that would bring us to the beginning of the subsequent school year if we were to launch this, the first new location in Q1 or early Q2 of this year.
Yes.
And thank you. Councilmember Hall, we have two left to comment. Let's go to Council President, Deputy Council President.
Thank you. Um, my opinion differs on this. I do not find this data compelling that we have a safety issue in these areas. I think the information that was presented to Services Safety and Parks early on showing the collisions and activities at red lights was compelling and was something that we should take a look at. But given that there are very few collisions in these areas and what I see as over 90% compliance with a lower speed volume in these areas, and even, you know, looking at the buckets, only around 4% going more than five miles over, I'm having a hard time understanding that there is a compelling safety need here compared to the cost to our residents. And in this case, I think it's particularly for the area of the Highlands where you're talking about residents who are going through there multiple times per day through that. I also hearken back to in 2017, the Issaquah Highlands residents brought their neighborhood speeding concerns to the city, and at that time, there was no school zone safety camera presented as an option. And in fact, it was said enforcement options are limited. The conversation over multiple meetings that was had was we need neighborhood resident education, and so they proposed signage and adding pavement markings to the street and flags for crossing streets. And so I just, between that and the conversation originally about the red light cameras and the data showing the fairly small number in my mind of speed violations and potential citations, I'm just not seeing this as compelling compared to the cost of our residents. You know, we have all heard from residents about the area on Second Avenue and how frustrating it is to get a ticket. I understand that area because you've got multiple schools down there and you've got high school drivers who potentially need a larger ramification than just, you know, going the speed limit. going the speed limit to keep them in a safe zone. But I'm just not seeing, based on the data here, that we really have a major issue with speeding. I also don't, like, there are other schools that we could have looked at. So I'm just, I'm having a hard time with the decision-making on this, and at this point, I'm going to be voting against the idea of either of the cameras. But if there is anything that somebody has to, that they find compelling, I would be welcome to hear it.
So Councilmember DeMichele, it's whether you want to go last or second last, because I did miss Councilmember Joe.
Yes, let Councilmember Joe go before me, because I believe he had his hand up before.
Okay. Councilmember Joe, I'm sorry that I missed you.
Couple of things, I had kids that attended IMS and would walk them to school from time to time, and safety was there because you had the separation from the road, but I didn't feel safe walking the kids to school. And I think when we think about school zones, they're at 20 miles an hour, because that's the speed that if a car does make contact with a child or another human, they're not going to be seriously injured or more injured than that and die potentially. We also have a significant elderly population that goes from Hutchinson House and some other facilities down Newport Way to go shopping at Safeway. They're a population we haven't talked about too much. They're walking all the way to Safeway along that route as well. So when I think of safety, those are two populations that I think are very important to consider and to try to keep comfortable and secure in our community and welcome as participants that can walk from place to place. I was originally supportive of the first motion coming out of committee. Councilmember Martz's comments make a great deal of sense to me, so I'll be supporting the motion this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Deputy Council President DeMichele.
Thank you. I will be supporting the substitute motion as well. And I too, like Councilmember Joe, am grateful to Councilmember Martz for pushing this second speed camera. So it would be unanimous if we were all together again. When this was first brought to our attention, and I drive Newport Way almost every day, and so that was sort of just a no-brainer to me, that that is such a heavily-traveled area, and the data again shows that a lot of people are speeding there. And so that one just absolutely makes sense. The reason I was interested in exploring the Grand Ridge area was because for years and years, I've heard from parents and from other people that they felt that it was a very dangerous place. And then myself, driving up there in the dark and seeing people speeding up there when there are pedestrians or when there is an activity at Grand Ridge, even though it is maybe after hours, especially if it's raining and it's dark, it is really kind of scary up there. So I was interested in exploring that one in addition. And originally, the idea that there were higher levels of violations outside of the school hours was my concern about taking that one. But the more I thought about it, the more I thought, part of this is normalizing safe behavior. And if we can, even if it's during school hours, begin to normalize slowing down and staying within the 20 mile-per-hour speed limit, perhaps we can also impact that area. And then if we can possibly look at shifting the span slightly, I think that would be something that we ought to explore and see if that would also begin to normalize compliant speeds in that area. So I will be also supporting the proposed substitute motion. And I really love data-informed, values-driven. Wonderful. That's a wonderful statement.
I'm getting you guys some coffee mugs, just saying.
I'll take that coffee mug. So, yes, so thank you very much.
Councilmember Martz, would you like a second round? Councilmember Martz.
I would. I just want to give a little bit of history on this. This issue, I first started talking about concerns about Park Drive in about 2012, because I used to, when I rode a motorcycle full-time, I would actually have to pull off the side of the road, because people would tailgate me on the way up Park Drive so aggressively, because on a motorcycle, if somebody taps your back wheel, you're going under their car. So like, half the time, I would go up into the Highlands, I would have to pull off to let a tailgater get ahead of me. And so we've been talking about this for a long time, and one of the things, and I think it was mentioned, is the possibility of a stoplight. And, you know, I'm at the point in council where I'll think to myself, well, we talked about this three or four years ago, and somebody will tell me, no, it was 10 years ago. And I'm like, okay, well, it was 10 years ago. We've been talking about a stoplight in that area for a long time. So I guess one of the things I would say to residents up there who are saying, like, why is the council doing this to us? You know, the alternative is to have a stoplight there, right? And a stoplight, I think a consistent 20 miles an hour, you would like that more than you would like a stoplight, but we need to do, you know, we need to do something, and this, to me, is a fair way to do it. And, you know, I'm ready, if people up there tell me that I'm a Grinch, because now they have to do the speed limit that we've had in there already, but we're actually going to enforce it, you know, I can live with that. But to please understand that the alternative, and may still it someday in the future, be a stoplight, and I think it's going to slow you down through there just as much as obeying the speed limit would. Thanks.
Second round comments. Would any other council, Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, technically at first, since I was just clarifying comment.
Oh, sorry.
No, totally fine. So I guess for me, it's just general comments. I guess the speeding data does seem compelling to me. I guess in my mind, and I definitely didn't think this until today, you know, it only takes one for there to be an incident, right? And if you accept the claim that a school zone describes a certain level of uncertainty in the environment, whereas you might not be seeing something play out in the data in terms of collisions or pedestrian, near pedestrian misses or something like that, you accept the claim that there is uncertainty in a school zone, then there are policy solutions that can be used to ensure that uncertainty is as certain as you can be. That was very circular, but I guess that's kind of where I'm thinking at the moment. I appreciate the motion, and I think it makes sense, though. I think I would personally, I think I'll probably vote no, because I think I would personally rather support the underlying motion of moving forward with one school zone camera at this time, especially since we wouldn't be installing the second one until going into the fall of 2026, because that might give us some more time to understand the evaluation of both camera programs, what kind of exit criteria we might want, or exit success criteria we might want for stopping a program, acknowledging that we're kind of built into these term limits on the leases. And if there are other schools to look at, I thought that was a good point. So to me, it just doesn't, it makes sense to might as well just do the one and then wait, and then have a broader conversation, including whether or not to put this second camera at Grand Ridge, since we have to wait some time there. Other things, well, actually, the other things I want to say, I guess, that can be the underlying motion, right? This is more to speaking to this particular motion.
This is to the proposed substitute motion.
Okay. Well, so that's what I'll say for now.
Okay. That was Councilmember Hall's first round. Second round for anybody else? Councilmember Ray.
I have a second round question, and it deals with contracting. What's the lead time to extend our contract with this awfully wonderful group that does this? Name, I don't know.
I would have to get back, Vera Mobility. They're the ones that currently operate our current system. We renegotiate our contract with them every five years on the current camera. We recently did that. So I think if your question is lead time to negotiate a current addition, it does not take very long.
Okay.
They are ready to go.
So if we said, let's go tomorrow, within three months, we could have something up and running.
Yeah, I mean, it will depend a little bit. One of the things that they consider is, and they handle this, but, you know, they do all the installation, so electric hookup and things like that. They're good friends with PSE, but, you know, they're pros at this, and they do this for jurisdictions all around the area, they'd be pretty quick to act.
And what about on the other side, are there any that you're aware of termination terms? So if we, let's say we set up a five-year contract with them, and we say, oh, shucks, you know, after three years, we're tired and we don't want to do it anymore?
We are bound to a five-year lease term, at least for paying.
Okay, so we're buying it whether we use it or not.
We are buying it whether we use it or not for five years. We can turn, we could turn it off and eat the cost purely of the lease and not anything else, but yes.
And Madam Mayor, members of the council, if I could just add, we want to make sure that the outreach is sufficient. And so while the vendor may be able to perform and have the technology in place, we want to make sure that if we're moving forward with the one at IVE, that we've talked with the neighbors, we've talked with the school, that there's been plenty of opportunity, because we would, we don't want people to say, I didn't know, or they're going to say it anyway, I guess, but that we do our level best to do that. So, you know, we would come up with a calendar that would match as close as possible the technology, but would err on the side of making sure the community outreach is complete.
Okay. Councilmember Ray.
So I wanted to kind of get some clarity on lead time before making this comment, but if we really are talking about not doing the second site until 2026, this is not a decision we need to make today. We have plenty of time to make that in the future, and that gives us time to evaluate. This is, thank you, Councilmember Hall, that was very insightful. Gives us time to evaluate whether this works. It also gives us time to fully assess, and this council can decide, you know, a year from now that it wants to move forward with a second site. And so we don't need to do that today, because we're not going to take any action on that second site until sometime probably in 2026. So there's, you know, there's sort of about this thing about urgency to make a decision because you need to do it, and then there's like, well, I don't need to make that today. So if we're going with the phased, if we were going with the, like, we're going full out, we're doing it all, we're going to be ready for the 25 school year, then we would take action today. But I think we've got the luxury of some time, and so I'm kind of inclined to say, if our mindset is we've got the luxury of time, let's just, at this point, go with one site, and then we can come back next year and evaluate and say, yeah, let's do another one.
So we have a couple of options here, and I will go to Council President after. One of the options is that the motion maker agrees to a friendly amendment that suggests installation of one camera and referral of the second camera back to his committee that would allow the committee to have a couple of touches before it shows back up here. That's an option. One option is to vote on this motion, have it pass or go down, and then consider it'll either be done or we'll be looking at another alternate motion. So is the motion maker wanting to consider an amendment to his substitute motion, or would you like to just have a vote and move on to another motion if it doesn't pass?
The motion maker is very confused.
Okay.
The motion maker didn't initially have this phasing in there and was asked to add the phasing.
Yes.
The motion maker thought the phasing would be as quickly as possible, and we seemed to have morphed into a fall of 2026, which was not at all the motion maker's intent. The motion maker's intent was to phase it as soon as.
Next school year.
As soon as staff could do it, basically. As soon as we got past this hump, which my understanding was more like three to six months. So that was the motion maker's intent, which is why I didn't put specific dates in there. It was as soon as we could, because it's a safety issue. That was my intent.
Would it be appropriate this time to take a break to allow you to work with the city clerk on clarification on your motion, your substitute motion?
I would love that.
Okay, how about we take a five-minute break?[1482.14] Okay, okay, okay. Coming back. Chance, if you could flash when we are live again, that'd be helpful. So we are back on the air from our break. We've had some clarification from our clerk. I'm going to hand it back to Councilmember Martz.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to withdraw the substitute amendment and move back to the original motion that was seconded.
Is there any objection to the council member withdrawing the substitute motion? Great, that is off the table. Where we are currently now is the original motion in the packet has been moved and seconded. And Councilmember Martz, you had something you wanted to do.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to propose an addition to the original motion and refer consideration of a school zone speed camera at Grand Ridge Elementary School to the Services, Safety and Parks Committee in first quarter 2025.
Is there a second? Second. It's been moved and seconded. Councilmember Martz.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to thank Councilmember Ray for pointing out that, that the timing on this, that there were question marks around the timing on the original bill. My understanding is that, as, I would like to do this as soon as humanly possible, but there's a, there's some question marks around staffing on the court side. And while there are these questions, I would like to give the administration time to go have those conversations and come back to the council once we have those questions answered. So that's why I moved this, this addition. Thank you.
Councilmember Hunt, you seconded.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I agree with the motion maker's intent, with Councilmember Martz's intent. I think the intent of the proposed motion that we were talking about minutes ago, as well as this motion, is the same, in my opinion. And I look forward to hearing the discussions out of services and, services and safety. But I'm on the same page as far as both, both school zones have speeding issues. And I would like to see both of those addressed and as soon as we can.
Thanks. Opening it up to the other five council members. Council President.
Thank you. I'm wondering, thinking about this potential referral for services, safety and parks for a Grand Ridge Drive location, or a Grand Ridge Elementary Park Drive location, would it be possible to get additional traffic and potential violation numbers for that location now that we have the additional speed flashing there? And would we anticipate potentially having data from the camera that would be already launched? Or would it be launched?
That's President, members of the council. We'll go back to the committee and ask those questions. And we'll ask what the committee would like us to gather, if they'd like additional information. They want to hear from both the police department and the court on implementation. I mean, I think from Councilmember Martz, that was the primary concern. So we'll, we'll see what the committee has to say. And if they'd like us to come back with additional information, we'll come back.
And Council President, I think it's always appropriate for a noncommittee member to poke and prod their committee members on additional information that would be useful to you. Thank you for doing that. Looking at any other comments from any other council members on this? Not seeing Councilmember Joe's hand up, nothing in the room. I'll reread it. The motion that has been moved, seconded, and suggested amendment is to authorize the addition of one school zone safety camera location by Issaquah Valley Elementary School at Newport Way Northwest, and authorize the mayor to enter into and execute an amendment to the agreement with ver mobility to add two cameras. And refer consideration of a school zone speed camera at Grand Ridge Elementary School to the Services, Safety and Parks Committee in first quarter 2025. And the city clerk has a clarification.
So we didn't technically vote to add that second, that referral? Or you could just ask if there's any objection to the addition?
Any objection to amending? Seeing negative head nods and a yes, not. Does not have a concern. Is that correct, Councilmember Joe? No, yes, if you do not have a concern with adding it. Yes, we got it. We have it. There is no objection to that addition. Okay. Do any council members want me to reread that in whole? Okay, then let's go ahead with the vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. All those, all those opposed?
Nay.
That carries six to one. Thank you, city clerk. Thank you, council, for your consideration. Yes, the nay, nay vote was council president. And Councilmember Joe, did we get your vote?
I voted in favor. I'm sorry if you didn't record.
Oh, there, that's great. It is six to one with the council president opposed. Thank you for all of that, working our way through our parliamentary process. We, and thank you, Dale. Lots of questions and lots of good answers from you. We're moving on to committee and regional reports, and we'll start with Councilmember Joe.
Thank you. The Cascade Water Alliance Board meeting was canceled because of the storm last Monday. I reviewed the applications for the LTAC Committee for 2025. We had our two hotels that applied again. And I think it was seven people to fill the other two spots. I went over the recommendations with staff. And those recommendations have been passed on to the mayor for further consideration. And that concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Joe. Councilmember Hall?
No report. Oh, actually, it is fire, for Eastside Fire and Rescue, it's fire chief evaluation season. So just as a heads up to the other board members and alternates, I have a draft. I'll send that out to you for any feedback you might have. Feel free to just add anything you'd like into it. And I'll include Mayor Polly and City Administrator Bob Kowitz as well, if you have any feedback for that process. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Councilmember Hunt?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. On November 21st, the Salmon Recovery Council of RIAA8, our watershed, met. And the main, the main business that was conducted was that the long-serving chair of that committee, who's Councilmember Stokes of Bellevue, is, is stepping down. He's done an amazing job for many years, leading that group, and has done an amazing, just amazing leadership across all of the cities in the watershed. So he is stepping down. The current vice chair, Redmond City Councilmember Vanessa Kritzer, will be serving as the chair. And Bothell Councilmember Karsten Kurd will be serving as the new vice chair. That was the main order of business. We also got a lot of interim updates on, and data on the salmon, salmon counts. It's a complicated mixed bag. It's also not the final counts. And so I'm happy to pass along that data. But it's, there were some good results and there were some results where we know we need to continue to work on the habitat restoration and make sure that we have sustainable population. So it was a, a mixed, mixed results. On, the next meeting is January 16th of the RIAA8 Salmon Recovery Council. And then on November 6th, which was after our first meeting in November of this committee, so, because this meeting was later today. So the Planning, Development and Environment Committee did meet on November 6th. We had one item, which was the missing middle housing bills. And we considered a number of policy questions around how we could both address HB 1110, encouraging and supporting more missing middle housing, which is duplex, up to sixplex. And, and also, you know, how can we make sure that we have more ADUs and more options for smaller units across the community, while fitting those units into existing neighborhoods, as well as complying with this state law? And doing all of that in the recently updated Title 18. There are a number of pretty complicated policy questions that were proposed and discussed by the committee. And the committee also recommended some additional reconfiguring of different questions. So basically, we wanted to make sure that there was flexibility in the code to allow for the market to decide what combination of units and density and those different requirements would be, would be possible to build. And so we did ask, with that in mind, for more options to be brought forward to the committee and also more options to be potentially considered by our volunteer planning policy commission. So there was some items where we agreed. We, we wanted to make sure that it was easy and, easy and easily understood how to make these units and that developers would be able to do that. But then there were some things where we felt like we needed more options. That will likely return back to that committee. Also, the, the state requirements are not required until many months later. So there is no urgency on adopting those. So we do have some time. I think it's May 2026. So that concludes the, the Planning, Development and Environment Committee report. And there is no meeting of that committee in December.
Thank you. Councilmember Ray?
I have no report this evening.
Thank you. Councilmember Martz?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Sound Cities Association Public Issues Committee met on Wednesday, November 13th, from 7:00 to 9:00 p.m. On the agenda included an update on regional safety action plan, an update on public health, Seattle-King County strategic plan, and a discussion of onsite sewage septic code revision. No action was taken. The Council Services, Safety and Parks Committee was scheduled for Tuesday, November 19th. As many recall, that was an interesting evening to be trying to hold a committee meeting. And the administration wisely recommended at 2:00 p.m. that we cancel it. And my power went out about 45 minutes before the meeting's scheduled start time. And we did not feel the need to reschedule that meeting. This concludes my report.
Thank you. Deputy Council President DeMichele?
Thank you, Mayor Polly. The Eastside Transportation Partnership met on November the 8th. And we received a report on the Sustainable Airport Plan. And then the remainder of the meeting was spent on 2025 legislative priorities. And we had quite a lively discussion for about 45 minutes on that. And I distributed the revised legislative priorities, or City Administrator Bob Kowitz did, in case you want to take another look at those and see if there's anything that raises a red flag for you, just let me know. Otherwise, those will be adopted at the December meeting. Eastside Human Services Forum met on November the 14th. And aboard, the board adopted the 2025 Legislative Priorities document for that group. And that was also circulated to you. And again, if you have any concerns, please let me know. And then leadership was transferred to the 2025 officers, who are Paul Lawali, who's the CEO of Friends of Youth. He will be the new chair for 2025. Vice Chair will be Bellevue Councilmember Janet Son. And Lindsay Yocum, a school board member from Lake Washington School District, will serve as secretary. And we had a very good discussion on future directions for the forum in 2025 under, under Chair Lawali's direction. And then unfortunately, I was not able to attend the Regional Transit Committee meeting because it was on November 20th. And for the very same reason, we had other things to take care of that day. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Council President.
Thank you. The Puget Sound Regional Council Growth Management Policy Board has canceled, I know, it's, it's such a long acronym, has canceled their meeting for December and won't meet until January. The King County Affordable Housing Committee will meet this Thursday from 2:00 to 3:30 p.m. virtually. And we have potential action to approve the Housing Element Plan Review Comment Letters for Renton, Clyde Hill and Newcastle. And also potential comment letters for cities that submitted late, did not submit, or in the process of growth target reconciliation. We have some cities that aren't going to get their comp plans done quite in time. So we have to figure out what the letter is there. And then potential action to adopt the 2025 Affordable Housing Committee State Legislative Priorities. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. There was no mayor's report this evening because I felt it was more important to give you a winter, a storm update. So thanks for, Jared, for doing that. We're going to move into Good of the Order. Does any council member have anything to share for Good of the Order? I have a couple little things. Okay, I believe you received a copy of these booklets today. We have some samples on some work that Economic Development did about how to do business in Issaquah. I have two different versions because I have one in Spanish, one in English. You have the English version there. Really excited to see this kind of guidance being prepared for our businesses. And the other thing, Councilmember Ray and I went to the economic summit that the Bellevue Chamber had, and we have some extra copies of there. I'll pass a couple down here in case someone would like to keep it. That is one of the best forecasting seminars that is out here on the east side. So they do a really great job. There are some upcoming council meetings. The next regular council meeting is Monday, December 2nd. Anticipated agenda items include public hearing on the 2025-26 budget, comprehensive plan periodic update adoption, citywide strategic plan five-year update, 2025 city council calendar, council vacancy process and timeline. Lots of stuff at that meeting. City Administrator?
Winterdin.
Okay, that was it for the Good of the Order. If you'd like to add something, go ahead.
Members of the council, there was another meeting missed, and that was the legislative breakfast.
Ah, yes.
I, I, I don't know that we would be able to replicate it in December. We might in January. Legislature doesn't go into session until the 13th. I think that's the correct date. So if you would want to do something after the first of the year, we could try. But I don't know that we could find a date in the month of December. We had difficulty finding the date we had. But I wanted to ask the question, or you just want to let it pass and make it a victim of the storm?
That's President?
Is the reason that we're having a hard time finding a day because of our recess? Or because of facility and staffing and?
I, I, I think that there was just an indication that, from the, from our representatives, that the beginning of December was just better. I mean, with the storm, we could revisit that. Then the question is to the council, are you looking, are you okay to do that? And how late into December would you want to do it? Or are we going to have council leadership talk about this this week? But while you're all here, I wanted to raise the issue.
Yeah, I think it's good to hear from everyone, at least myself. I'm interested in having the event and, you know, whatever we can work out. I think our legislators recognize what a, what an issue we had, and it would be good to get together on that.
That's my Martz.
Yeah, I mean, I would like to still see if we can do it in December. I've got, oh, I have a surprising amount of availability this particular December. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you for that update.
We'll get started on it.
We have some work to do. The next item on our agenda this evening is an executive session. ID 1773, executive session, property acquisition per RCW 42.30.110 per N1 per NB. ID 1772, executive session, pending potential litigation. Action to follow an open session. These items are expected to take approximately 15 minutes. And action is anticipated to follow an open session. And these sessions are closed to the public. So we will go into executive session at 9:30. And do we need to have a break before we go into session? We had a couple this evening already. Okay, so we will go right in at 9:30. Okay, so we will go right in at 9:30. Anyone who's not part of the closed session will remain in the main meeting, and you're welcome to stay in the main meeting until it's reconvened. Ms. Clerk? Ms. Clerk.
Do we want travel?
Okay, audio is coming back on. I'll figure it out. And he's going to blink us? Okay, we are back in open session at 10 o'clock. And would somebody like to make a motion? That's President.
I move to authorize the mayor to execute separation agreements with those staff whose positions were eliminated as part of the 2025-2026 budget process as discussed in executive session.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any council discussion? Not seeing any from Councilmember Joe or anybody on the dais. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed? That carries unanimously. There being no further business, we are adjourned at 10:01.